We are good, so let me know. Okay, welcome to our city council work session. It's Tuesday, the 4th of March, 5:30 PM. Grateful to have the throngs here today. It's good to see all the seats filled, those that are. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. So, I'd like to get going. Call the roll, but everybody's here, so we're good to go. Pledge of allegiance, would someone be willing to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Yeah, if someone from the gallery.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask if anyone would like to offer an invocation or give us a spiritual thought to, or inspirational thought to start this meeting?
I can do that, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day, for the opportunity we have to serve as councilmen and leaders of the city. We're so thankful for the residents of our city, for this beautiful place to live, for the blessings that Thou hast bestowed upon us. Father, we pray, special blessing to be with us this evening as we make decisions that will affect the community and our residents, that we can be inspired to know what to do and say. Please help us to keep our residents in mind as we make decisions. And we pray, Father, that we can receive the necessary moisture we need for our crops in the coming season. These things, we pray for at this time in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Lynn. We can go straight into our business tonight. Like to ask Carolyn Quigley if she would like to come up and give her presentation? Oh, is it both of you?
Yes.
Wow, you roped him into it, huh?
Well, actually, I roped her into it.
Oh, it's your fault!
It's my fault. So...
If you'd state your names, please, for the record.
So, my name is Scott Quigley, and this is Carolyn Quigley, my wife. My lovely wife. But, um, so, I've been given an opportunity through what's called the Ruth. You guys might have known him as the Orem, the Health Center. They used to be there, but they've actually moved to Pleasant Grove now. And so, I'm actually one of the advocates. And as I went, I actually drove her, and now she's an advocate. So, it just gives us an opportunity to, if you know an advocate, we get to go through, we're designated Santaquin and Payson area to be able to go out and to spread joy, if you would call it, just to let everybody know what the Ruth is all about, what they're doing. They're about education, they're all about trying to teach the people how to dance, and to act, and to...
The arts.
The arts, they just want to give back. And so, one way that they give back, because it's a nonprofit organization, so one of the ways that they give back to the communities and everything is through giving out vouchers. And so, tonight, we have what here, the Jersey Boys, the vouchers. We have about forty-seven of these. And then, so, we'll explain a little bit more, but I'll let her explain a little bit before I go into detail with that.
Okay, so I understand, being a government employee under the state of Utah, like, cause I'm a state employee, that's what I am. But I understand there's a limit on what we can receive as a gift. And so, the tickets run from anywhere from thirty-seven or thirty-four dollars to like fifty-five, and I think the state is like fifty dollars. So, if you average the tickets in between depending on the states, it's under the fifty-dollar mark. So, uh, per person, now, you're able to get two tickets. So, if your spouse doesn't work for the government, then you're okay, right? We'll go that way. But we want to, we want to honor you guys. Ruth really would like to make sure you're aware of what they have and be able to come and enjoy a show. And so, like we said, we have the Jersey Boys that is going to be in production. And it is a PG version, much like what was done down at Tuukkaan this last year. They also had Jersey Boys as one of their productions. Um, if you know much about Jersey Boys, it's about Frankie Valli and the Four Seasons. And they were thugs, and their language was really, really bad. But for our community, they have toned it down so the community can come to the production. So, with that, I'll turn it back over.
So, again, we go anywhere, it's all Utah County, so we've gone everywhere. There's other advocates all the way from Utah, or from Lehigh all the way down here. They've gone to Virginia, everything. So, again, we, you guys have to decide yourselves. We're not going to make you decide right here on the spot or anything. You guys can discuss how you guys want to do it. They say you can give them to the, like, the department heads within, like, the fire department, the police officers. However you guys want to try to distribute them out, we're really giving you the idea of basically how you guys would like to do it. Again, it might, it might not be a... It's a gift, and it might not be like a five-minute talk. It might be, can we do this, can we do this, can we try to do this? I don't know how, you know, other cities are, one of them's doing a raffle, so I don't know how that's working.
Which I think's funny, because state of Utah, you can't do a raffle. Even though we do a raffle, we're not supposed to. So, breaking one law to do the other law.
Each city does it different. So, again, how you guys decide, and if you guys can't use them or anything, the only thing we actually ask you to do is that you contact one of us so that we can come and pick them up, and we can distribute them throughout the the community, to give back and let them know, you know, how great our mayor and everyone else on the council and everything like that is how we're giving back. But we want, we just want to give, you know, you guys a first choice, because there will be other opportunities for them as well as we go throughout the year. It won't be just a one-time.
So, we have different initiatives. Um, the first initiative we were involved in was going to elementary schools. And, um, so Scott went out to the elementary schools here in Santaquin, and we're able to give out vouchers for the teachers, the administration, um, this time around, and that was for the Ragtime Show. And this time, it's for the Jersey Boys, so...
Any issues?
I try to be pretty conservative on those things. I just suggest that, you know, you limit it to one and make sure that it's under fifty dollars. So, that's my input.
And as far as staff, what we can typically do is, is we just put them out in an open staff area, and staff can, can take one and then go from there, so...
And again, as long as they understand, again, what the tickets are, and if they're going to use them, I don't want somebody to take it and put it in the trash.
Sure.
Something like, we want to be able to make sure, again, give them back. And however you guys, that's what I'm saying, is it's up to you. So, I can leave this with...
Would be best in their hands, I think. And, and you know what? Thank you for coming and doing this, and I hope you stay around for a few more minutes.
Okay. You guys are the warm-up we get to do Payson tomorrow, so...
Oh, really? Wow, we're always warm here, so... Thank you, we appreciate the Quigleys and all you do. Our second thing is, and I talked to council in the last meeting about my hometown and explained at a high level of where things are. And I would like to introduce the Burton's, Craig and Linda. They are amazing people, and they have quite a vision with what is going on with my hometown. But I did want to say something, you know? President Morgan kind of cornered me, and it took him maybe two months to get a meeting. And, and when I heard it, I thought, oh my goodness, this fits right in with much of the vision that even was a part of Santaquin before I came in as mayor a few years ago. The past mayor said to me, I wish that I would have been able to reach into the bowels of the community and help with just any, any big thing that could have made a difference, cleanup, teaching, reaching others. And you hit every aspect of that, and I appreciate your time. I appreciate you being here. And my intent tonight was to give you the floor and let you go through this.
Thank you, Mayor. We're Craig and Linda Burton. My hometown, full disclosure, my hometown is a mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, a most unique mission. We don't wear suits and ties. We don't wear missionary badges. We actually serve in the names of the, in the name of the cities where we are serving. We've got a little presentation. It's about a twenty-minute presentation that we can show you, but really, we want to hear from you and be able to answer your questions. And as we go through this, try and help you understand what, what my hometown is and what it's about. So, let us know, Mayor, if, if there needs to be a stopping point.
There's a big bell that rings. If you don't hear that, you just keep going.
No trap doors, not that I'm aware of.
We have some time, we carved out a half an hour. If we need a few minutes beyond that, we can do it.
Okay. And so, we're trusting that Norm can make this work, Norm?
We're there. Whatever, let me know what you want to do.
My hometown brings together cities, neighborhoods, multi-faith resources to revitalize neighborhoods and provide resources for those in need. And simply said, I think the next slide might give the... Well, go ahead.
Go back if you would.
Okay, there you go.
My hometown lifts the lives of residents and attracts individuals and families who want to live in and contribute to the long-term viability of their community.
Okay, the next. It's a cooperative venture between local governments, churches, businesses, NGOs, and neighbors. It had its beginning about five years ago in West Valley City. Uh, and then we'll show through this how it has grown and what it, what it has become in that, actually, almost a six-year period of time now. The next one. We're now in sixteen communities, three up in Ogden, just opening late in West Valley City, there's four. Salt Lake City, there's three, two in Orem, and three in Provo. We, we call these, these communities, actually, they, they begin with the organization of the church as a stake. We call them communities, because again, we serve in the name of the city. And, and so, to differentiate, we, we call these communities, and, and in cooperation with the cities, we determine even what the boundaries are. Okay, next. Its organization is, is, we'll just do the brief overview. We serve as the, as the My Hometown Utah Directors. If you were to look at it as a mission, we serve as the presidents of My Hometown Utah, or the My Hometown Utah Mission. Within that organization, we have some directors that help us with different kinds of initiatives. But in each city, we, we call a city chair couple. If you were to look at it in the organization of the church, they would serve kind of like the state president. But they serve as city chairs, and they are the liaison between My Hometown and the city. A very key role. Under each of the city chairs, then we have these community executive directors. And these communities, like we say in West Valley City, there's four communities where we serve. So, each community has an executive director, and it's a couple, a husband-and-wife team that work together. And then, it goes below that to the next slide.
So, it's a two-pronged initiative, well, mission. One prong is the Neighborhood Services Directors, the other is the Community Resource Center Directors. And that will, we'll explain that a little further as we go on.
In, in those Neighborhood Services Directors, there, there are church service missionaries who are actually called by the state presidents, or volunteers. We don't differentiate. If they're a church service missionary, then they're, of course, members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Volunteers, we don't, we don't, actually, we prefer we have more people who are not of the church faith, that we work together because we're doing this in the name of the city, to unite the city. In 2024, we had thirteen hundred and forty-three church service missionaries and volunteers. On top of that, we have these partner stakes, and we'll go through how those partner stakes work. But there were seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two volunteers from all of these partner stakes helping with these days of service or the Neighborhood Services, or assisting in the Community Resource Centers. And we'll go through and taste a little bit more. So, last year, we had almost twenty thousand volunteers helping in these sixteen different communities up and down the state.
For a total of two, over two hundred thousand community service hours. That's through the state of Utah, from Ogden to Provo.
We keep track of the hours, and it began really because the cities asked us to, because they get grants by these volunteer hours. And so, we've developed some software that helps us keep track of the hours. Quite frankly, we don't do a very good job, because there's more hours spent than what we keep track of. But at least this, we can then give it to the cities, and the cities use this as they apply for different grants in the cities.
Let's talk a little bit about the Community Resource Centers. Remember, we have two prongs, the Neighborhood Services and the Community Services. Their communities, excuse me, Community Resource Center. Our Community Resource Centers usually begin in a church meeting house or another public building to provide free educational opportunities. We help neighbors learn critical skills and improve their lives. And some, a lot of them are just enriching skills that we have found. One of the benefits of this is when we have community members coming in to take piano lessons, or take art lessons, or take, or have a yoga class together, whatever the class is that we offer, all of a sudden, they're together, and they're building community as they engage in these activities together. Art class has been something really interesting to watch people bond together as they kind of become vulnerable and show that they're learning a new skill that maybe they haven't done before. But all of a sudden, they're knit to each other because they're doing something uncomfortable together.
Our, our church service missionaries, again, rather than using badges, we give them lanyards. And it says that they are a volunteer with, uh, with, this one is with the city of Orem. Here is the city of, of Provo, uh, the city of West Valley. And they wear, they'll, they'll wear a lanyard. They're instructed they do not proselyte. They will attend wards, but they do that to get to know the people and what the needs are. And on Sundays, they'll wear their, their missionary badges. But otherwise, they're instructed not to wear them. They wear the lanyards to differentiate and show that they are volunteers with the city. So, in 2024, in those sixteen communities, we had six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five students in, in different subjects throughout the Community Resource Center.
And here's some example of the classes, I mentioned some of those. English as a Second Language has been our biggest class demand. Basic computer skills, homework help or tutoring, music lessons. Sewing has been another one that has just exploded recently.
What we do even with, with these classes, like the music lessons, the piano and the guitar, we have a nonprofit that, that helps us financially, and we provide students a Casio keyboard. Most of them don't have any way that they could practice the piano. And so, we give them a Casio keyboard, and if they come to the classes and participate in the recital, we give them the keyboard. So, we're, we're teaching them how to fish, that's, that's the whole idea. The same thing goes with sewing, trying to teach them how to, to be more self-reliant. And we've been able to buy sewing machines, and if they come to the classes and they do some projects, at the end, they keep their sewing machine, and they can help their, their family and even make clothing. And it's been something that has been really quite, quite remarkable. Uh, in some areas, up in Provo, they've been able to get BYU's assistant with laptops that, that have been surplus by the, by BYU. We can't do that in, in most others, where state schools, they have to go through a, a process to auction them off. But if we can do that, then they even end up with a, a computer.
So, show what it looks like. This is what a community resource generally looks like inside.
It's volume up.
The other side, as, as my wife said, is, we call it Days of Service or Neighborhood Services. And with the, the help and the direction and the cooperation of the city, we organize Days of Service. It's a major part of what goes on, and these are actually quite significant events. Usually do some, somewhere in the neighborhood of, of twelve to fifteen projects a week. And our church service missionaries organize, they, they work with the city if there are zoning violations, or, or neighbors say that someone has a need, and, and then work with what we call partner stakes, and with the city, with people within the city, and organize these projects. And, and do those, in some cities, we do it six times a year. So, like, April, May, June, don't usually do it in July, August, September, October. In Ogden City, they have us do it four times, just one day, because of the insurance requirements that are there. And this is something that we'll talk a little bit more about. In 2024, there were six hundred and seventy-one of these projects that were completed up and down the My Hometown sixteen communities.
And this is what it might look like.
By this clock, they have most of the branches off. They put a new fence up for me, which is great. They're clearing out some trees in between the property. Got rid of an old chicken coop. Cleaning up, which is a blessing.
Volunteers team up for the My Hometown Initiative, a service group in Utah made up of locals helping communities come together. The initiative organizes service projects that coordinate with local service organizations, nonprofits, churches, and city officials to clean up certain neighborhoods.
We had learned enough in our efforts over the years to realize that really, neighborhood sustainability is about the people that live in the neighborhoods. Absolutely no question. There are things that we can do to assist and help with that, but in the end, it's the neighborhoods and the people that live in them themselves that have got to be able to ensure that longevity and sustainability in the neighborhoods.
It's not about the projects. The projects are a vehicle to create neighborhoods where people know each other and want to spend time with each other and want to help each other.
There is great, great happiness that comes in getting outside of yourself and serving other people. Life is a lot better, the world's a lot better, our communities, our neighborhoods a lot better. There's a community where people are proud to live there. They trust one another, they help one another. That's why we're doing this, and that's what we're hoping for.
This is something that is going to make the city as a whole better, as well as our own interest here, and we want to contribute to that. We want to see that happen.
It works best if we can get the people who were helping in, like, in a residential situation to join us in that project. We always ask if they can contribute the funds for the materials needed to improve their home wherever possible. If not, we try and supplement and find other ways to take care of that. The ideal is when neighbors see that a project's going on, and they want to see and come and help. That's the objective, is to get neighbors helping neighbors more than having outside help coming in, but it takes a little time to get to that point.
Not unusual that we'll be doing a project. There was one where a fence was being put up. The neighbor came over and said, what are you doing? And the, the woman that we were helping said, we're doing this fence. And he said, can I help? They had both lived in their homes for twenty-seven years and had never met.
Not in Santaquin, doesn't happen in Santaquin, I'm sure.
We, we see this time and time and time again. And that, that's what this is the effort for. So, it says, what does the city do? They partner with My Hometown. They provide the resources, and they assume liability for the DOS projects, those Days of Service. The church assumes the liability for anything that happens within church buildings. If it's outside the building, then there's an agreement that we enter into with the city and, and the church. And the city assumes the liability for the work that's done on these projects. That's a real key part of what goes on. We, we really are partners. And then, we, the, the city provides guidance for classes. This is what we would like to see in our city. These are the projects we need help. When we started in West Valley City, there were, in Granger, there were three hundred and eighty zoning violations. Within two years, they were gone. That's, that's how we work together in eliminating. And in that process, they save money on abatement. Ogden City said last year that over two hundred thousand dollars was saved on just zoning violation abatement. And that's just because of the volunteer. So, what does My Hometown do? We partner with the city. Now, that's a real key piece. We provide the volunteers, the teachers, the tutors, the service providers, provide the places to meet for instruction. If it's a church building, if it's a private building, or if it's a city building, then we work as partners to do that.
When we say we provide this volunteers, like in a Community Resource Center, we would want to have as many people from the community as well participate. That's ideal, rather than bring outside people coming in. The more we bring outside people from outside the community, there's usually a little resistance and pushback. We don't need rich people coming in to build our community. The ideal is when we can have the community, serve in the community. Sometimes we have to start in a, in a different way, so that's, you know, the ideal.
In some areas, we, we really try, and there's, there's a petition, a request that we help with immigration help. And, and we team up with NGOs and nonprofits to do that, but we cannot do that in church buildings. So, we're quite limited. If all we do, if all, we, if our Community Resource Centers are located in church buildings, then we cannot do any immigration. If it's outside, even if it was in the city building here, then we work together with the city and try to help with immigration issues. But we provide the structure and the organization, and over the years, we've, we've found ways to do this and streamline it so that it's very efficient on our Days of Service projects, that those who are the givers are equally rewarded and, and feel uplifted and benefited as well as the receivers. That's, that's when we know it's a success.
In Orem's top five accomplishments, you'll notice that they, I mentioned My Hometown Initiative. They just began last year, and it was among their top five accomplishments. And so, that was a good plus for us.
As mayor, one of my key goals is to strengthen the opportunities for families to live and thrive in Salt Lake City. My Hometown leverages the partnership between service and love of community to improve the lives of our residents, our neighborhoods, and the quality of life across Salt Lake City. My Hometown brings service and volunteerism around a locally-generated focus of need that leverages our city... and can now speak English and function easier in our society. The community is responding, with seven hundred people attending the CRC and two hundred getting ready to graduate. Neighborhoods are literally being transformed with ongoing Days of Service six times a year. Projects include things like painting, yard cleanup, landscape, community garden cleanup, tree removal, and fence repairs. Neighbors are getting to know neighbors again with social events throughout the year, and some of these events have thousands in attendance. My Hometown Provo is positively changing the trajectory of individuals, families, and communities. Thank you, My Hometown.
There are some testimonials that we can show if you want to see those. Are you ready to use question and answer?
We have a few more minutes. Would you guys like to see them?
Can I just mention this? This, you know, we've talked a lot about it, but really in a nutshell, our mission statement is "My Hometown supports communities of caring as we listen, love, and lift together." So we are trying to listen to what the needs are. We try and address that in a loving way so that the Community Resource Center, the Days of Service experiences, become a safe and loving place to serve together in a joyful way. And then as we do that, we lift each other, both the giver and the receiver.
Coming to Santaquin, if the city council opted and said, "We want to do this," this was a big step for the church. Up until now, it was they didn't want to come down beyond Provo. We made the petition really because of President Morgan to come here. And it's a different setup, and we'll be learning together. We don't have the critical mass here that you have up in Salt Lake. For example, in 2025, on our Days of Service that are scheduled, we have a hundred and forty-one stakes that are committed to come and provide volunteers. Here, it's going to be different. It's going to be more within the city. We may ask some other stakes in some other areas to come and help if that's the desire of the city. But it will be a little bit different. We're going to be learning together if that is the decision of the council. If you'd like to see those testimonials, there's some that are really quite good.
Or would you rather spend some time asking questions? That might be more profitable.
Would you guys like to ask?
I don't have any questions right now.
I've got some questions. So this seems like really good, and I think this is really beneficial to communities. I just have, I mean, obviously, I'm a member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. I love my affiliation with the church. But I also need to be mindful that there are people in the community that aren't members of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. And especially in Utah, that can sometimes leave people feeling othered when the church dominates or administers in a lot of community organizations. For those positions that you listed out, is that something that typically city council or the mayor would approve of? And are those limited to only active members of the LDS Church?
The leadership is limited right now. But certainly, we can have, we call them volunteers, and they are absolutely welcome to teach any of the classes. They are welcome to lead, you know, lead. They can be the ones that can be in charge of the CRC. There's a lot of things they can do. If we're in a neutral building, that opens up other opportunities. We welcome them with open arms, and we see a great opportunity for their. We're having a lot of success with bringing in people that are not members of our community. Granted, probably percentage-wise, I'm guessing in Santaquin, it's more lopsided towards the church percentage than in some of these inner-city areas where we work. I don't know what the dynamic could be, so we'd want to be especially careful not to other people out.
Yeah, I think that's great. The only concern is that, I think, you know, when you think of separation between church and state, now the city, a government, is forming an entity with the church and allowing a church to appoint the leadership, which isn't quite good optics. I would be opposed in that situation. If there was a way where the mayor, I mean, obviously, the church could propose leadership, and I assume the people that would volunteer, probably ninety-nine percent of the time, would be members of the LDS Church. But if there was a way to get it so that, hey, elected officials are having a say in who is appointed to an entity that the city is over, I would feel a lot more comfortable.
This is a great question. Great question. We need to take that along.
Really, we use the church as a springboard to get started. You've got to have a starting point, and the church is an ideal way to do that. If the city council said, "We've got this couple that we think would be wonderful and that could work between the church and the city," that liaison is very important. We would say, "We welcome it." Our job is to work ourselves out of a job. Our job is to get this started and leave, and let the city then take it from there. And in some cases, we're finding that that is what is exactly happening. People are starting to see what it can do, but they have to be able to see it to be able to say, "I want to be a part of it." Even members of the church, when they're called to be a part of this, they just say, "I don't know what this is about." Once they get in, we can't get them out. That's our problem. We tell them, "Be really careful because it's quite addictive, this attitude of service." And you wear this. Sometimes we'll go at the city's direction and go to a house and say, "The city has indicated that there's a zoning violation and has asked us to come and help. We are volunteers with the city." Sometimes they'll say, "We don't want you there. We organize into block captains, and hopefully, they're not even members of our faith." And they unite their people and say, "Would you go?" And we say, "Why don't you come with us?" And tell them. And once it starts to happen, then it starts to warm up, and you see that the change has happened. You have to have a place to start.
Have you partnered with? I know quite a bit of people that go to other churches here in Santaquin, along the highway on Payson and whatnot. Has there been active reaching out and partnerships with other local churches?
You know, there's one of those testimonials.
Testimony. I was thinking that very thing, the one with the Reverend or the minister.
The interfaith effort on this is huge, and we really work on that. And you may want to start, do those testimonials. You'll see a couple of those that are pretty significant.
Our church, because that's the answer, from a group of people gathering together and praying for the avenue, the way, the provision to paint the whole building. One of the CRC directors said, "Pastor, do you have any project in your church for My Hometown?" The next day, they sent me an email, "Hey Pastor, looks like the Lord is going to answer your prayer." We have around seventy-five volunteers working together to paint this beautiful building.
I think more than people know, this is a very, very impactful program. There's no program out there that tends to the specific needs of our residents quite like My Hometown program.
One of the great things that happens with My Hometown volunteers is that they meet with students one-on-one and to help the students learn and read. My Hometown has been a tremendous partner for Salt Lake Education Foundation and Salt Lake City School District.
The areas that have had My Hometown cleanup come and do projects in that area, that's something that we've seen as far as less graffiti, less problems. Individuals in the area take pride in their neighborhood and in the area, and also the community of Ogden as a whole. We've seen that it kind of works to help the members feel that sense of community to work together to make Ogden a better place.
My Hometown and this project is going to help our employees by helping them realize more that their time and their efforts make a difference in the community. So our communities thrive when we all help each other. That's what it's about. So it's a great partnership between Key Bank and My Hometown in doing exactly this.
We are very interested and engaged in trying to improve the quality of life of people in the city. One of our objectives is to help the neighborhoods be clean and comfortable. And without the volunteer help that we get from My Hometown, it'd be virtually impossible for us to do that. So as we encourage people to take care of their yards and take care of their projects, the My Hometown project has been just a Godsend to us. We're so grateful for the volunteers and grateful for the effort and the work that they put into it.
My Hometown Ogden is built basically on the idea of being a good neighbor, of seeing a need in the community and recognizing that we have the ability to do something to meet that need. When My Hometown Ogden came here, they not only served here, but there were like thirty other locations just in the Ogden community that they served as well. That's what My Hometown Ogden has been doing. You've got my praise, and you've got my thanks, not only that way, but I'm praising God for what you do.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, with all my heart, thank you.
So the interfaith community effort, that outreach, is a major part of what we do. And having them participate and even offer classes in their facilities, that is really a major part of what we do.
In fact, one of the pastors even offered to teach one of our classes in his church and do it in Spanish because he was a Spanish speaker. And so that was a great blessing. It takes some time to build those relationships. One of our greatest ways to help integrate the interfaith communities is to begin, we usually begin in a community with a community resource center, but we have a big kickoff. You saw some of those events. We invited the mayor to come, we invited the interfaith. We invite them to come and do a performance or be part of something. We had one of the groups come and do a flag ceremony from one of the other interfaith groups. And however we can find to integrate them into it is a blessing. We have in West Valley City, every Christmas, we have an interfaith Christmas program that we partner with the other entities, and it has grown to be quite the community affair. It's really pretty remarkable.
But like you said, it doesn't happen right out the gate. They have to be able to see it, and that's why we use the church as the springboard. You have to have a starting point, and that relationship between the church and the city is a real critical piece.
So I know you mentioned that church service missionaries are the ones that plan the Days of Service. Have you seen other churches be able to be in equal partnership of having their clergy or even nonreligious people be able to not just be volunteers, but be active planners equal to church service missionaries?
We're getting to that point, but it's slow. It is slow, and sometimes we find we have limited resources, and so that's why they depend on the church for that.
I definitely, I mean, as a member of the church, I know that there's a lot of enthusiasm within the church for service, and so I think it'll be very easy to find people within the church. I just, my only concern is that I think that if a government entity were to be in partnership with a church, that people of all faiths or no faith have equal access and equal opportunity to any level, whether that's the equivalent of a mission president or whatnot, and that elected officials or city staff as directed by elected officials have a say in the appointment of those positions.
That's a really good question, really good question that we need to address.
Bill, did you have some?
Can I just speak on that just briefly, if I may? Thank you. As you may know, I'm a Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints leader here locally. But some ten years ago, Mayor Hunsaker reached out to me when I was working with youth in the Spanish branch and was saying, "Is there any possibility that we can get some, your group or anybody you're working with, to reach out to our local churches and community and see if we can't get some cleanup efforts going on?" It was a hard thing to get together, and this is one of the things that responds to that. But I was able to get together with Pastor Chris Demorel, who was the pastor of the Baptist Church then under Mayor's encouragement and others, and we were able to get out and do some projects. Now, he's a deacon down in Nephi, but since then, I've been in touch with Deacon John Bean at the Saint, and it's hard for me to say, Sheena Orthodox Church. It's right along the freeway in Payson, and I've been out, actually gone to their services and then visited with him and talked about some of these possibilities. And I think it's vital. I think it's vital that we bring in our community in these efforts. One of the things we struggle with is, in my role, is when we have the Days of Service, getting the word out, and currently, we just don't have the forum well enough in my mind to get all the help coming. And I was in Europe during the floods of whenever ago when we were doing the sandbagging and trying to get the word out, where if we had something like this in place, the whole community, and I went up, when I learned about this, My Hometown seeking for a way that we could get our whole community involved, I did drive up to Provo, yeah, to Provo, and I went through there and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, if we could have something like this in Santaquin, where just a phone call and the whole community, churches, organizations that aren't members of any churches, or if we could just come together and be responsive quickly." And that just got the light going and things on fire here. And I appreciate what you're saying. I think that's what our current mayor is trying to do, as well as our former mayor, in asking me to reach out to other churches, and I think that's definitely part of what we want to get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would be partners, for sure. And sometimes we get going so strong because there is so much to be done. We charge ahead, and I think your comment, to have the liaison. And that's why this city chair couple is so critical, because the city chair is working either with the city manager or someone appointed at the city level, and there's communication happening all the time. That is a key piece, and if it's not there, quite frankly, we don't come. If we don't have full cooperation and full church cooperation, we don't come. Those two pieces have to be, and there has to be a well there.
For those same positions, I noted that you stated that, I think, on the community side, what you said, like the equivalent of like a stake president, that it would be a couple. Are you open to people that are not married regardless of marriage status? Or I just view, I mean, the only reason why I ask all this stuff is because as elected officials, we took an oath to support the Constitution of the United States. And that's our primary responsibility here.
like this in Santaquin, where just a phone call, and the whole community, churches, organizations that aren't members of any churches, or if we could just come together and be responsive quickly, and that just got the light going and things on fire here. And I appreciate what you're saying. I think that's what our current mayor is trying to do, as well as our former mayor, in asking me to reach out to other churches, and we, I think that's definitely part of what we want to get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would be partners, for sure, and sometimes we get going so, so strong because there's so much to be done. We, we charge ahead, and I think your comment, to have the liaison, and that's why this city chair couple is so critical, because the city chair is working either with the city manager or someone appointed at the city level, and there's communication happening all the time. That is a key piece, and if it's not there, quite frankly, we don't come. If we don't have full cooperation and full church cooperation, we don't come. Those two pieces have to be, and there has to be a well there.
For those same positions, I noted that you stated that, I think on the, the community side, what you said, like the equivalent of like a state president, that it would be a couple, are you open to people that are not married regardless of marriage status, or I just view, I mean, the only reason why I ask all this stuff is because as elected officials, we took an oath to support the Constitution of the United States, and that's our primary responsibility here, and as a member of the church, I love the church, and this seems like really great. I, my, I just have a lot of concerns about making sure that there's equal opportunity to all people of any walk of life. Obviously, there's safety and legal reasons why people might be excluded, but, but if this, I'm supportive that the city can find an arrangement where there's equal opportunity to everyone at all levels of the organization, regardless of religion, race, creed, sexuality, whatever it be, that we're making sure that we don't discriminate.
Thank you.
We, we would welcome it.
Thank you. I'm not sure we have a lot of other questions. However, we did discuss it last week. There were some good things. What we have asked is for some information on an MOU type of discussion through Provo or...
We have two of them. We have two of the existing agreements.
And we can evaluate that to move forward, and also, I talked with Mayor Kafusi, and she talked very highly about the costs incurred for her city even, and she said everything that they have invested has been brought back tenfold, but even, even for costs, they had people step up outside, and so they really don't have a budget item that goes with it. However, there are expenses, but even those have been covered, and that would be the goal I feel like I would have, to make sure there isn't a big cost that we would have to worry, where are we going to get the funds to do this? Because I see so much need. I think it's something we need to consider. You know, I would like to get it so that each of you have a chance to read through the MOU and look at kind of how these things can play out, and maybe able to make an action on it in the next couple of weeks, I hope.
I think as we mentioned, Mayor, like Mayor Kafusi said, and really like they've set up in Ogden, that mitigation, that cost mitigation, it way over compensates for the cost of the city. We have to know that the city will support it, and there is, there is a financial piece to this. What that is, usually we would start with a community resource center, and a community resource center, the city's outflow is negligible. It's more for like the big event and those kinds of things. When you start getting into the days of service and you're using equipment, and sometimes you've got an indigenous family, you've got a situation where they just don't have the means. The city has, has access to funds that, in a case like that, we aren't going to go to the church, we're going to have the city help with that, and we'll provide the labor. And often, like the mayor said, we've had people that just show up, and they show up with equipment, they show up with, with people. It's, it's an incredible thing. When they see it, they want to be a part of it, but that, that relationship is, is really, it's a mandatory kind of thing, that we have to be partners together.
Okay. Art, did you have one thing?
During your presentation, and you were talking about classes, you mentioned the word self-reliance. Well, that kind of rings with me, of course. Is it possible to interact your classes with the self-reliance classes that the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints sponsors and holds?
Again, we try to separate, like you mentioned, we try to be careful that we're not promoting the church's classes or so forth, but we can teach the principles. For example, in our English classes, we have, we use the English Connect One and English Connect Two. We've had our education director remove the church language out of that so that we can teach it in, you know, public buildings so that we're not teaching church language and so forth, and I, we...
Those self-reliance classes offer a greater amount of information and help?
Absolutely, and I haven't looked at it recently, but I, I know that they have, I think they have two, I think they have two sets of, they have one, two sets of curriculum, one with the language and one without the church language in it. So I think they are using that up in Ogden and also in West Valley and a couple of the communities.
We've been very careful with that, and that's a great comment, that we don't interfere with what the church is doing, or even appear like we're doing what the church is doing. That, that could cause a problem, but that's one reason, pardon me, the church said, don't come beyond Provo because the Wasatch Front Service Mission provides for the bishops this self-reliance training. Here, we're coming here where Wasatch Front Service Mission has not existed, so this is a new step, but there is a self-reliance program the church has developed that is, is non-denominational.
Okay.
And so we would look at that, and if you said, we would like to have that offered, we would say, then we'll find a way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need to wrap up. We've got a couple of other things. Hopefully, if there are some other questions, we can move them on, and I can email anything that you guys might have, want to send to me, on to them. Appreciate you being here tonight, both, both of you, and well, all of you guys that are here. It's great to see things that can be done for the betterment of a city. That's why we're here, to help in any way that we can. Thank you for taking your time.
Thanks for giving us the time.
Appreciate it very much. We need to move on. Jason, would you like to take the agritourism and move with this?
Yeah, Baron Counsel, just kind of as an introduction, we have Dustin Rowley here. He's a nephew of Curtis Rowley who, who came to the council meeting a couple of weeks ago, a couple meetings ago, sorry, to talk about ways to encourage and, and open doors for agritourism opportunities with some of the agricultural operations that are around in the city. Back in 2022, there was some work done to, to look into more permanently allowing for agritourism-type things. Right now, there is some temporary use applications and licenses that can be issued for, for those types of activities, but this, this is something that Curtis Rowley came and talked about maybe taking a step further with, with that. So what was done a few years ago was, was essentially put together a draft ordinance, and, and part of what, what, my goal with this was, was I recognize that all of our residential zones don't even have agriculture as a permitted use, which is kind of an interesting thing because agriculture is such a big part of what Santaquin is. So that's one thing that I would propose is to permit agriculture in residential areas. Now, I'm not thinking that houses are going to be mowed down and more agriculture is going to be put up, but I think it does send a message of, of what Santaquin is, is about, and what we're, what a lot of residents continuously remind us is of what they, they think needs to be preserved. In conjunction with that agricultural building, and then a new term that I would propose that, that there be a definition for, and which could also be permitted even in residential zones, is agritourism. Now, the reason I suggest that is because, again, a lot of comments are made about agriculture is important to Santaquin, and if we truly feel that agriculture is important and we want to preserve it, there's got to be opportunities to help make agricultural viable to be preserved and maintained. Land values are going up and, and, you know, obviously, family dynamics change and generations pass on to the next, these farming passions and farming skills, and it's getting harder and harder for, for these agricultural operations to continue, continue going into the future. So if, if there's a real desire to preserve those things, then, then what's within the city's capacity to do is, is help make sure that the zoning is in line with that, and even if that means commercial activity in a residential area, if it's on a, an orchard or an agricultural piece of property, you know, a U-PIC or a stand of selling flowers or fruit or whatever, I think is certainly something that would, would need to be considered to, to help make that, that property viable, but also, you know, which is in line with, with a lot of residents' desire to see agricultural remain in, in the community. So I'm going to read this definition for you, and this is kind of what we have now. This is just a draft. I've, I've talked with Dustin about being here, and I know what's not in this definition and what he could probably give a little bit more detail on, and what Curtis alluded to a couple meetings ago was, was a hospitality component to agritourism. He talked about having yurts and allowing people to stay in those and really, you know, kind of have an overnight experience in, in an orchard or an agricultural setting. So the definition I, I've put together for agritourism is the practice of touring agricultural areas to view and participate in agricultural-related activities for recreational, entertainment, or educational purposes. Activities for visitors to enjoy in a commercial or non-commercial way shall be secondary to and supportive of the agricultural use of the property without taking away from the distinct farming purpose and character of the area. Such activities may include receptions, photography, markets, U-PIC, festivals, and farming demonstrations. Now, the reason why some of that reads the way that is, is we don't want an orchard to become so successful with an agribusiness that it gets away from being an orchard and it becomes a full-on commercial business. So that's, that's why this definition was created the way that it was, and it obviously mentions very specific things, and I know that, that the Rowleys kind of helped with that because these are things that they do with their temporary use permit currently on the property just, just north of Macy's. So that's kind of what's here before to the council to, to discuss. Obviously, there's no action on this. This is a work session, but if we're in the right, going the right direction, and this is something that you're encouraged by, we can, we can take it to the next level, but I don't know, Mayor, if it's appropriate, maybe Dustin can speak a little bit more to, to not just this. I've talked with him yesterday about what, what we have prepared thus far, but particularly his idea to take it one step further with, with the hospitality component.
Take the floor, Dustin. I'm waiting for you to say something like hoser, but you'll need to pass that back to your mom for me.
I'll tell my mom that you wanted me to send that on. Hey, thanks for having me on tonight. Yeah, we, very good introduction. Thanks, Jason. We are looking, sorry, a little taller, looking to have some overnight stays on the farm. We're, as many of you may know, we currently have the event venue there in our orchard just north of Macy's on that temporary use. Curtis talked about yurts a little bit adding to what we're doing down there. We've, we've found a partner that we're working with from Hurricane, Utah, but he has what's called a box house that are very, not complex, but they're very well put together, and it's a little bit cheaper than creating a yurt there. But we're looking at an option like that to have a little bit easier, the mobility, moving transporting them and getting things put together there. Oftentimes, we get asked with some clients that we have at the, the event venue, if there's a place to stay. This could be kind of one of those things that we can add to that piece, being able to have them stay in the orchard there. We have educational pieces that we could provide in season for some of these folks to keep at the agricultural piece involved in there. We are interested in being compliant, and that's why we're here, making sure that we can get hooked into the city and the sewer, the power, the culinary lines, whatever we need to do to make that happen, and stay above board with all those things. And that's really it, you know, short-term stays and those types of things that, out in the orchard, and then another, like I said, another big piece of that would be the education that we can bring in to that in the season while we're harvesting, while we're pruning, while we're thinning, doing some different things around the orchard, around the farm that we can introduce to those folks that are able to stay there.
So just a question that comes to my mind, these tiny homes that you're putting in or that you propose, they self-contained, so they have a little kitchen? Do they have a toilet and a shower?
I did not bring pictures tonight. I was going to, didn't unfortunately, but yeah, they are, it's all of that. It's almost like a, I don't know, just a studio apartment. That's what it's called.
Do you have a website that we could pull up by chance?
Tryboxhouse.com. I don't even know what his website is, but you could, Brother Google could help us.
Brother Google.
That's something from my dad.
A next, a next question too. You know, when I was a kid, I grew up in all that, and it was smudge pots. It's some reason, they, they don't exist anymore, but spraying does. How do, how do you propose to work around the spraying aspect of this? Because every twenty-one to twenty-eight days, you've got that going on. Are you considering, well, we have to block out these timeframes and hopefully a new cotton moth doesn't come up or something?
Geez, you've been around. You've been around the block here, haven't you there? Yes, we hate sprays just as much as everybody else does, although it may not seem like that sometimes. So we, we work in integrated pest management, specifically in the apple blocks, which is where we're proposing these could go, where we don't spray unless we trap something that doesn't look good for our crop. But in that event, we would definitely block that time off, you, the usual types of sprays, usual times of sprays that happen. Outside of that, a lot of the sprays that actually occur on apples are fertilizers and oils. They're just fine. Yeah, we, we...
So DDT is right out, huh?
Yes, I don't know what that is.
I can go back a long ways.
So how many of these, these are permanent structures, obviously. How many are you planning on? This is in my backyard, and I have absolutely no complaints with what you've done so far. I was a little worried when you started putting it in, but I have my windows open in the summer, taking in the cool air, and I can sometimes hear the music, but it's, it's never bothered me, and it's shut down before I need to go to bed, so I really don't have any complaints. How many of these are you planning on? Is it going to fill up that empty space back there?
No, we're not putting them there. So our proposal, if, if anyone is familiar with that location Mr. Meek wants to talk about?
I'll, I'll pull it up real quick.
Yeah. It, it would be frankly, south.
Where you've had the other square before, where you, where you brought in the other farmyard?
Yeah, so you can see right in the mid, do you know where the Chad Rowley, yeah, that's Chad Rowley's house right there. So the two places that we've kind of thought of is east and north of that in that green block, yep, or directly south of that in the other green block. Those are the locations that we're kind of thinking of right now. Oh, sorry, those are the locations we're kind of thinking of right now, but it would not be in your backyard.
How many?
That's to be determined. It might be five. It's got, obviously, it's got to make sense in the space. Obviously, we can't put thirty in there and think that we're going to get away with stuff, so it's definitely got to make sense, but it's, we don't know that yet.
And I think there's, there's obviously a process we can go through because, because obviously this is kind of a, a springboard into, to look, exploring this idea, but this is something we'd want to write that could be applied citywide, so it's not just specific to this, this piece of property. Maybe it's done on a, a number of, of units per acreage or something like that, that, that we could find some sort of a calculation that would make sense. But obviously, and, and again, I think that's why it's important in that, that definition that I, I wrote, that, that this is, this is meant to support agriculture and preserve agriculture, not necessarily slowly turn into something that is getting away from agriculture and, and becoming, you know, something completely different.
So that piece, east and a little bit north, that, that one right there, let's say you put five in there, is the idea to put them together, so a family, or, or scatter them out in there, and so they could have their own individual experience away from the other homes?
Sure. It could be both. It could be either.
Either or.
Yeah, it could be either or. We would, for ease and convenience of hooking into everything, it'd be nice to put them together, obviously, then we're not traipsing through all of our orchards, but it could be either. There could be a section where there is a conglomerate of them, or, you know, five or six of them, whatever, and then there could be a couple others scattered, but we're in the early works of that and trying to figure that out.
So this is one or two, three or four nights. It's not a long-term, it's just like a hotel, basically.
Yeah.
Bed and breakfast.
Yeah, they cook their own breakfast, so I don't bring it to them.
They cook their own breakfast, so I don't bring it to them.
I love the idea.
Are these permanent? Uh, you know, there are, uh, this is obviously I'm in the short-term uh, stay profession. Uh, so cooking breakfast is actually something that I've heard many people go to these farms and be like, hey, I got fresh chicken. Uh, omelets made, but um, but what I was going to ask you is, are these permanent structures or are these? Uh, I know, like, I personally have looked into like tiny homes, RVs that you can easily move, attach, detach. But I know that picture that Norm brought up is, are these permanent, built-in? Are they more RVs on wheels parked?
Yeah, they, well, they're not on wheels, but they're just, that is literally just a pad of cement. It's, it's a box. It comes in almost a a small shipping container, if you will. And then it pops out and kind of opens up into what it is, and they they build it incredibly well to make it all work and fit.
It sounds like it's one step above glamping, where instead of it being like a tent that is really nice inside, this is more of a, a, you know, a stick frame structure than
They're not transportable, though, is what I'm saying. Like, there are some where where they're transportable, they're trailers and you could take off the wheels, put on the wheels. Or is it like these, where they go is where they're going to go? I'm just saying, outside of this specific use case, do we want to be thinking about? Are we allowing RV tiny homes? Are we saying you can only use permanent structures? That's what I'm
Yeah, I, if you wanted to pick it back up, you probably could figure it out. Uh, but from my understanding, once it's popped out, it's popped out.
Okay, yeah.
So it's it's semi-permanent or permanent? It's not a
Sure.
It's not, you know, it's not going to
We're not going to stick wheels underneath it and
Of necessity.
And it would have to be, uh, from what you're describing, hooked up to city utilities and being able to be serviced by water and sewer, especially in those two, you know, electricities and other things that we don't do, but obviously you'd have to have power there. Couple, tho- those are a couple of things that, questions and thoughts that I've had, as well as a potential for um, uh, hospitality tax as well. I don't know how that works. If you're charging a rental on those, that's typically going to have some type of taxation attached to it that would benefit the city. I'm not, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying, just just looking at kind of the the logistics of the whole thing. These are some things that we need to take into consideration and and again, Jason pointed out to me offline that that one of the things that that this current thing that he has been working on for a couple of years or worked on a couple of years ago has it as what we call a conditional use, which is an allowed use, but they have to meet certain conditions. Parking, access to and hook up to utilities, uh, access roads that are at least, you know, I I I'm just speaking out loud here, potentially gravel. You don't want people in the mud.
Right.
Right? And so all of those types of things could be something that could be a part of this, what we would call a conditional use, where again, it's not homes, it's not, it's more of a hospitality like you're indicating rather than than a than a home or a a long-term living situation.
In in your due diligence, uh, what kind of interest did you get out of this? Or have you gone that far?
We uh specifically get as, so probably seventy percent of the people who book an event at our venue there ask us if we have somewhere to for that they could stay. So if, you know, if that's fifty events, you're looking at about thirty-five or so people that are asking if there's a place to stay. Uh, that's where we've gone with that. Um, you know, I, we've looked around this, around the nation at some of the opportunities that other people have had in in the the short-term rental and something similar to this in other states, and it's wildly successful.
Did, did you compare it with uh the company that does that in Fountain Green? They, they actually have teepee camp camping
Okay.
That's even not quite as nice as this. And it goes hand in hand with a barn that uh you can hold the venue in that's uh
Okay.
You know, it's quite a, quite a thing. It's, I think it's even called the barn. It's on the, on the west side of town, about in the middle of town, about a mile west.
The barn at Sage Canyon Ranch?
Yeah, that's it.
Say that louder, sorry.
The barn at Sage Canyon Ranch?
But I was just curious, you know, we we're talking to hotels at this point. We're looking at what it is. I, you know, it, this is a different experience all the way around, and it it's something that would really benefit possibly your uh agritourism, your, your business model. I think uh, we want to discuss this, see what all the good pros and cons will be and make it a model that'll work.
Okay.
Okay.
And we appreciate that.
We can, we can't take a vote on it. We we weren't planning on tonight. Uh, where where Jason had actually been working on this for a little while when Curtis came before us uh two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, was it?
Two meetings ago, I think.
Yeah, a month ago. Uh, I think that's helped facilitate some of this, so uh, we could continue this. You have a relationship with uh Jason at this point. And uh, I think we'll just try to see where we can take it and help you out.
Okay.
Is this the kind of thing we could regulate in an ADU ordinance, or is this short-term rental?
This is, this is probably different than ADU. Like I say, I think it's specific to agritourism and and I haven't gone through everything that's been prepared, but like Norm mentioned, as a conditional use permit, I've already kind of drafted some conditions. One of the things I think would be needed as a condition that would uh is very different from what the city usually requires, that I think helps agribusinesses is allowing for gravel parking. Usually our parking needs to be, but obviously if it's agricultural, then it's it's part of the whole experience of not having, you know, everything be proved to this this high standard of of what we usually require for parking lots and businesses. So I I have a handful of those. Obviously, we're at a time, we're not going to go through it, but I'll I'll continue to work through those conditions with with Dustin and and we'll we'll kind of refine uh, things that I think need to be there to to help uh manage it, but also give give them the the flexibility that they need, and then we can bring it back to the council in the form or really would go to the planning commission first because this would be a legislative action for an ordinance amendment, but we can take this to the planning commission uh in a draft form, uh, hold a public hearing, get a recommendation, and then bring it back to you for your consideration if if that's the direction you'd like to go.
Yeah, are you going to be the point man or or is one of Dale's boys or anybody else going to be involved with you?
Uh, one of Dale's boys will be involved as well, but I'll be the the main contact.
Okay, how come you're limping?
I had surgery on my knee a month ago. Basketball.
Basketball.
Don't play it anymore.
Hey, we all limp because of that.
I appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much. If if you want to go back to family, that's where we are. We are working on things and anything that we start bringing together, you should be able to get some input on.
Okay, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Just give me a call and we can coordinate a time to get together and and look a little closer at this together.
Um, we probably want to wrap this up fairly fast. Uh, I think you ought to go over probably just a couple of things on the agenda items.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, we have Chief Lynn with us here. If any of you have um, questions on the out-of-state training request for himself, this is an annual training that he budgets and and budgets for and takes him out to do the the uh arson investigation training. So if you have any questions, he's not able to stay for the rest of the meeting because he needs to go to some training tonight that's oh, probably over at our fire station. So any questions for him on that? Okay, great. Uh, we have minutes and bills, expenditures. We'll have the business spotlight. Um, we do have a a community services board appointment. The mayor will talk to you about that. And then coming up in the in the regular meeting, we have a budget amendment number four. We have our finance director here with us if you have questions on any portion of that. I I will point out that as you noticed, there was two other sections that were related to community services in the police department. And so there's memos there that I asked them to prepare. Neither one of them could be here tonight. Hopefully, those memos answer those questions, but if you have anything for uh Shannon, you're more than welcome to ask that, and she can cover that in the, in the meeting for the budget amendment.
Okay.
Have a professional services agreement with Hanson Alloose. You may recall a couple of months ago, we got a grant from the state of Utah for up to twenty thousand dollars to help us get a uh a water use element into our general plan, which was required last legislative session. This, their their proposal is for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, I believe, to help us with that. Uh, also an MOU with uh with Comcast for just ongoing extreme work that we have with them to try and keep up with, ahead of them with everything from permit reviews and and issuance to blue stakes to everything else that's going on with that. Um, Jason, if you want to go over the ordinances?
Yeah, so the couple ordinances, uh, one is is a proposal from from a couple uh individuals for reducing the uh parking requirement for commercial recreation. Uh, this is something that went to the planning commission, a public hearing. Uh, planning commission gave a recommendation uh that they didn't, they didn't like the the proposal as it was presented, but they are very open to to maybe massaging our code in a way that we could find something that works for both the city and and the the uh applicant, the the person proposing it. So uh, that's the first one. The second one is is really something that you're already familiar with because of the general plan amendment that was recent, recently done for uh uh meeting the moderate income housing requirement. So this would just be an ordinance allowing for detached accessory dwelling units to happen in the R fifteen zone. So happy to answer any questions you have about those two items.
And then lastly, just a sale purchase agreement on one of the lots out in the Summit Ridge, uh, sorry, Santaquin Peaks. Uh, uh, industrial park. Happy to answer any questions that you have on that.
Okay, look, we've got uh nine minutes. I'd like to take a break in between, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn? Travis?
Aye.